Just giving everybody a one-minute warning before our social hour needs to end and our business meeting needs to begin. Okay, noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may do so on Acton TV's YouTube channel, found at the top of our agenda. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV's website at actontv.org. Bless you, and good evening. So, welcome to our October 19th meeting. We are going to get right into our business tonight. We've got some really exciting updates. So first, I'd like to invite some of our high school student representatives forward to the mic. Please, whoever is presenting, please come up, introduce yourselves, since there are some new committee members here as well. And please share your perspective on what's happening from a student perspective. And as a reminder, this is per our policy JID, Student Involvement in Decision-Making. Hi, Molly.
Hi, I'm Molly. I'm a junior, and I am going to have a few things to talk about today, and I know there's a five-minute limit, so I'm gonna try and speed them all up. First, I have a friend who is disabled in school, and she uses a walker. And I've recently, when walking around school with her, disturbing our freezing stuff, we've realized that we have a lack of ramps in our school. So if you know anything about the layout of the high school, there's kind of like a lower level on the first floor, there's an upper level on the first floor, and then there's the top floor. So going from the lower level to the upper level of the first floor, there's like only a ramp in east wing. So if you want to get from the lower level of the first floor to the upper level of the first floor in the west wing, you have to go all the way around to the east wing and then make your way back, because there's no elevator, or there's no ramp on that side of the building. So I do think, I know a construction project is definitely big, and it's not something that can really happen during the school year, but I did think that was something I should mention. Also, I have another disabled friend who has been having a lot of trouble with administration getting a disabled parking pass. She's had a lot of trouble with the Massachusetts State Government getting one, so she's been trying to work with her assistant principal and her counselors getting one, but she's had a lot of trouble with that, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. I was gonna say something else. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, and one other thing. My friend wanted me to bring up a women's studies class. She thinks that that's something we should have in our school, because we do have, we have the Critical Race Theory class now, I forgot what it's called, Understanding Race, there we go. And we do have a lot of classes that are like starting to build up over the years, so she thinks that's something that should exist. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Anybody else from the high school?
All right, hi, guys. My name is Julia. I am now a sophomore. Just a couple things, I think Dixha just came in, so I'll leave the homecoming to her. I just had a quick thing that I've noticed in my grade that has been a bit of a concern. So we've noticed that sometimes there's a lack of transparency between the students and the teachers with regards to kind of what materials taught in class are considered to be crucial to this course, and are like taught throughout all of the teachers of that one course, whereas some other materials are more supplemental and are kind of just, like I said, supplements to the actual course load. So I think while the specific issue was nicely resolved with the teacher, which is great to see, I'd just like to see more transparency between students and teachers, especially when multiple teachers are teaching the same class. And yeah, just something to be aware of. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Dixha.
Hello, I'm Dixha. I'm a sophomore this year, and I just wanted to talk about homecoming this year. Student Council is organizing it, and the theme is Hollywood Night, and so that is something to look forward to. Another is the Masquerade Concert that the orchestra is organizing between the RJ Gray Orchestra and the High School Orchestra. So that's a lovely opportunity for the middle schoolers to see what the high school orchestra is like. And something else that I want to bring up is kind of how at the end of the term, there's a lot of assessments, and so this is just a reason that causes stress to a lot of students, hence the pajamas and the math binder, but, so just something that I want to bring attention to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will say that I was stressed out on Parents' Night at the high school, trying to get from southeast to northwest in the five-minute passing time that I had. And I can only imagine what it's like if you have to find a single-stall restroom or a ramp on your way, so definitely feel that pain. All right, moving on to public participation. So per our school committee policy, BEDH, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes. We will dedicate a maximum of 20 minutes to public participation. Speakers must be recognized by the chair before speaking. As a reminder, the committee does not typically respond to comments during public participation, and also, this will be the only time the public will be invited to address the committee, so please do come forward with items that are both on and off the agenda. Any members of the public wish to speak?
Do you recognize me?
From a mile away, John. Good evening.
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I attended the ALG meeting this Monday, and these early budget discussions made clear that this will be a painful budget year. The ALG spreadsheet states that the Acton levy limit will be $103 million for FY '25. Approximately 4% of the Acton property tax revenues will be consumed by the $3.9 million Minute Man Assessment, consisting of $3.45 million for operations and $0.45 million for debt service. The Minute Man budget for the current fiscal year, FY '24, of $30 million, which is 30% of the district budget, will serve a projected enrollment of 734 students, which is 14% of the district enrollment. I suggest that the school committee take three approaches to reducing the Minute Man Assessment to Acton. First, as is the case, as in the case of special education services generally, the school committee should lobby for additional funding for Minute Man from the Commonwealth. The case for higher levels of state support for these significant per pupil expenses, which were $33,000 a year in 2021, is clear. The Minute Man per pupil expense is nearly double our district per pupil expense. Second, the school committee should include Minute Man in a future school committee budget agenda and invite Pam Norris, Acton's representative to Minute Man and the Minute Man Administration, to participate in the discussion of the importance of reducing Minute Man's per pupil cost or, at a minimum, limiting its rate of growth. Finally, the school committee and administration should continue to work to make the regular education program at ABRHS as attractive as possible to our student base, to reduce the number of students selecting educational programs outside the district.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Okay, on to our superintendent's update. Peter.
All right, so, good evening, everyone. Just to start by saying, it was absolutely wonderful and uplifting to see so many people come out this past Sunday for the Walk Against Hate. I wanna, you know, just thank Congregation Beth Halloweum for taking the lead in organizing that. There were well over 400 members of the community. We had students participate, staff, faculty, administrators, school committee, but just a really great, positive, uplifting event, and we're so thankful that that took place. Wanna also just thank, you know, some members of the school committee. You had an opportunity to visit McCarthy Town Elementary School, Miriam Elementary School, the junior high, and the high school last couple of weeks. That was really a personal highlight for me of the last two weeks, being able to get into teachers' classrooms, see what they were doing, show off all the great work that our educators are doing on behalf of kids across the district. Hopefully, that gave you some really nice perspective on what's happening in schools for kids every day, because it was awesome to see. I'm gonna later present a little bit of an update on the migrant shelter that is coming to Acton, that we actually just received an email today, that we're actually now anticipating that being around about November 20th. So the nice thing is, it's giving us a lot more time to plan to welcome students and families than many other communities have had. We also have a great provider, Making Opportunities Count, MOC, who has a lot of experience in this area. I think, you know, the piece that I keep coming back to, I know a lot of communities have struggled to figure out how to welcome students and families in a thoughtful way, but the piece to me that I think we're at an advantage is, our community has been welcoming people from all over the world for, you know, the better part of three decades. We know how to do this. We know that there's gonna be some challenges in terms of students' experience arriving to us, and experiences that they've had that we're gonna have to be thoughtful about, but the overall premise of how we're gonna work with kids is very well thought out, and our educators are in a good place to do that. We'll talk later about some additional resources that we're gonna need to do it, as well as funding sources, but I just wanted to also put that in the superintendent's update. You know, holidays and traditions, we will send out some information. You know, I think, you know, a lot of families around the district have seen schools start to move away from traditional Halloween costume parades and things like that, and we just wanna send out a little, you know, clarification to create a shared understanding of why we don't do the traditional parades anymore. And it's really about trying to honor families' individual wishes, about how they go about celebrating different holidays. We certainly teach about all of the holidays that our kids experience, and that's gonna continue to be important, including Halloween, including, you know, all the different holidays that we now have on the school calendar. I think the difference is, we don't want to actively have kids dress up to celebrate a holiday, because it's putting students and sometimes families in a challenging position about how they interact and access schools, particularly for younger kids, where it's really not the children necessarily making the full choice, and it's hard in school culture. So we'll just send out a little clarification about that, so that families have it. Principal spotlight, we've been spotlighting all of our principals on social media. October is National Principal Month, so we have been highlighting just, you know, some facts about each of our principals, some personal anecdotes, things like that, just as a way of celebrating all of the hard work that our principals do, so please look out for that. Feel free to like it as well, and give a little shout-out to our principals, they always like that. We are also sending out to families a really cool Boston Globe article that was a recent edition, where one of our students actually was interviewed as part of the article to teach parents what they should know about different social media platforms. So we're thrilled to be able to do that. We have a Cartwheel Care webinar coming up, the next Cartwheel Care webinar is November 1st. That is raising healthy kids in a digital world, I'm sure a topic that's gonna be of interest to a lot of our families across the district, so we're sending out that registration link. We're sending out, the state asked us to just do a little bit of promotion around the new 911 processes, so that people with disabilities can better access 911, so we'll send that out. And then, just more information in the next coffee with the superintendent. So, thank you, and happy to answer any questions, but not on the shelter, because we're gonna talk about that later.
Thanks, Peter. Any questions from the committee?
I actually do have a question.
Go for it, Liz.
How is Cartwheel Care still doing? Are we still, you know, increasing the number of requests and being able to meet the demands?
We, I don't have the most recent data, to be honest. Yeah, we haven't collected-
Not data, just overall, has it been successful?
It was very, very successful last year, and I don't, I wish I had the numbers in front of me, but we basically used up our entire allotment of hours over the course of next year that we had projected, so that was great. We had a lot of families participate. What was really nice to see is that the response rate from families, Cartwheel does an exit survey with every family who's used their services, and it was extraordinarily well-received by families and very highly rated by students as well, in terms of, you know, them feeling like they had quick access and that it was effective as well. Cartwheel also, what's been nice, we were the first-ever district to partner with them. I actually think they've now expanded within a year to, I think it's over 40 districts in New England, so clearly a service that's been well-received. We were the first-ever district to sign on with them, so what's been nice is, we have a little bit of an in with the senior executives in the company, and so whenever we express a different need, they're very responsive to kind of understanding our community's needs and finding new things that they can do.
Excellent, great to hear. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Peter? Wonderful, thank you, Peter. All right, we are moving on to our guests and presentations section of the meeting. I would like to invite Principal Dean forward, with her cadre of support, to talk about the high school course leveling update.
Can you hear us? All right, great. Okay, thank you for having us tonight. We're gonna give you a quick update on course leveling. I'm gonna give a overview and then turn it over to the real teachers who are working on this initiative within the classrooms. First, I really wanna thank the entire staff at the high school for working on our course leveling initiatives to really revamp our curriculum in a very student-centered way. Doing this work during this time while teaching amidst everything else has been challenging and exciting, but it takes a lot of work. And the leadership from the department leaders, the administrators, and the entire staff and their efforts have been truly incredible, so I wanna express my gratitude. All right. Our goals. I wanna reiterate our goals of our course leveling work, so they are, and these are our priorities, to increase opportunities for advanced-level coursework for more students. And secondly, to provide broader learning and social environments for our students. So those are our priorities in this work. All right, second, last time I was here to talk about course leveling, there was a very long presentation with a lot of slides about our entire plan, and it went late into the evening. That was in April of 2023. So I wanna recap quickly what we have done since then with your feedback, with student and teacher feedback, and community feedback. So throughout the summer and in the beginning of this school year, our teachers have been working to collaborate, peer-coach, engage in professional learning, to work out, to figure out ways to better prepare themselves and teach their classes in more heterogeneously grouped environments. The administration, department leaders, have tried to provide structures for teachers through our scheduling, providing time for collaboration, providing professional learning, and providing structures within our school schedule and day to be able to offer student support, such as academic support centers, which are places where students can go to get extra help in subjects like math, social studies, science. And so we've engaged in that work. We looked at the input and feedback from students, teachers, and community members. I'll say, overall, in general, the positive feedback from students, teachers, and the community is around the opportunities that this provides, and students have recognized that and noted that, especially with the work in ninth-grade environmental, English, and our language classes last year. Most concerns center around being able to provide appropriate supports for our students, especially those who may have been typically in our CP1 classes, and opportunities for our students who would have typically been enrolled in our AE level. And that is certainly something that we wanna watch as we're collecting data to inform our plan and as it evolves. I will say then, lastly, that we have put together our course leveling website, where you can find lots and lots of information, down to the smallest minute detail, and I encourage you to look at that website. Today, we have three teachers from three departments who are gonna share their perspectives of this work. I'll say that these teachers are representing our math, social studies, and science departments. Our language and English departments have also been deeply embedded in this work, and in fact, they've been doing it for many years, even up to eight years. And so they're a little bit further ahead, and they have reported great successes, and we look to them often as the rest of the school is moving in that direction. So I'm gonna turn this over to the teachers, who know exactly what's going on, and they can share the successes and even the opportunities ahead. You'll hear from them some of the needs that we need in order to make sure that this work is appropriately supported in terms of resources, appropriate class sizes, supports that we need for our teachers and our students in order to make this work successful in the future. So the first teacher is from the math department, Amanda Bromberg.
Hello. Hi. I'm very impressed. I don't think you looked down at your paper once. Like, I, I don't, I can't do that. But yes, I'm Amanda Bromberg, I'm from the math department. We really are just starting this work as, as in having the Algebra I new course this year, but, so I wanted to talk more about what led up to where we are right now. So we're piloting a new Algebra I course that establishes the more diverse learning environment with the goal of incorporating more students who historically would have enrolled in our Algebra I Part 1 and Part 2 over two years, and have them in our Algebra I full-year course, and have more students have access to more curriculum in that way. So over the last, I'd say, year and a half, we've had four teachers, myself, three other math teachers, who quickly realized that if we were gonna put this work in, we were the ones who wanted to teach the course. And then we also have a course level leader, Sue Robiak, and Jessica Carablis, our department leader, so the six of us are really the ones who have talked a lot, you know, done all this work. So over the year and a half, we had several alternate assignment days that we would get substitutes for, and we would spend the whole day first diving into the state standards and making sure that our Algebra I curriculum was aligned with the state standards and how, you know, how we wanted them to. We were sharing ideas about student-to-student collaboration, and that's one of the main topics of the work, and also new ways of demonstrating how the students know the material and what, what they understand and how deeply they might understand it. We all went, and actually, the, most of the math department, not just the four of us or six of us, went to other school districts. I personally went to Conquer Carlisle, where they have a lot of math support classes in place already, and we learned a lot from them, and I'll talk about our math academic support center that came out of that. You know, we didn't do exactly what they're doing, because it didn't align, but we got a lot of information from, from them and some other schools. We used all of our, all of the early release days that we possibly could to collaborate with each other, because last year, we did not have a common prep period together, so it was very hard to get together during the day. This year, purposely in the schedule, we all have a common prep period, which is fantastic, because we really, I don't know what we would do without that right now. And we also did summer R&amp;D days, two of them this summer, to really just make sure we are ready for this new Algebra I course and figure out how we were gonna make the students collaborate and, and make this as successful as we could. So the math ASC was, is a very, brand-new this year. Students that would have been recommended for our Algebra I Part 1 from their eighth grade recommendation were given the option of being in Algebra I with a supported class. There was a, as I understand it, there was a family conversation with Jessica Carablis and the family and the eighth grade teacher, and they agreed to be in this math-supported class, which is in their schedule every other day, and it is taught by two educators. One is a co-teacher, special ed. She actually co-teaches a math, one of the Algebra I classes with me, and the other one's is one of our math department, in our math department, so they kind of collaborate with each other. And our long-term goal there is so that maybe other students can drop into that math course, but right now, we're, we're definitely not ready for that. We also vamped up our mentor program. I never had a mentor before, and now in the, I have two Algebra I classes, and every Algebra I class has a student mentor, they're fantastic. Usually, I think it's juniors or seniors that do that, and they love it, and the kids love it, and so that has been great. And then, we also have an emphasis on different, like instructional strategies. We were approved more whiteboard spaces, those were installed first in the Algebra I classes, and I believe they're still getting installed in some other, other classes. But it just allows us to get the students out of the desks, up and around. I really like, I, one of my favorite things to do is have the students at the board with partners, and then give them problems, switch, 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 so they're constantly switching partners, and they're constantly collaborating with new people, different people. And then lastly, I just wanna kind of land where we're at now, and some of the struggles we're facing, expected and unexpected, some, like, we, I'm not sure how many sections we actually have, but we have four teachers with several sections each, and some classes have more support than others, like, some are co-taught, some are not, some have two mentors, some have one, some have a mentor, actually, I know that one has a teacher and aide and two mentors, so, you know, there's, there's discrepancy in that for support of the students. Definitely, we want and need more time, some time to collaborate with the junior high teachers, because this is not gonna work well without a smoother transition from the junior high to the high school, and we really haven't spoken to them at all, and so we would really like to get that going. We also have students, whether they were slated for Part 1 in Algebra I or not, that are struggling, and should we be pushing them to struggle and keep that and work with them, or is there a place for them to land, like, keeping the Algebra I Part 1 available to them? But some students now are locked into a schedule that can't be changed for other reasons, so it's hard. And lastly, the math ASC, the academic support, some of the findings is that there's, you know, seven, I'm not sure the cap of the kids that are there, but they all have different needs, and they, now there's one teacher that has a variety of different supports, whether it be the basics of math, their organization skills, their study habits, their helping them with their homework, all at the same time. So we're definitely struggling, but it is only October, so we're hoping to get more results, you know, by the end. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Drouin. I'm in the social studies department. So a lot of the same preparations that Amanda just spoke about in math were also happening in social studies, so even last year, we were doing a lot of early-release time, and the world's history teachers, a lot of us have been teaching together for over 20 years, so we really know each other well. And I have to say, from a personal perspective, it's just been incredible, working so closely, creating curriculum together, scaffolding curriculum together, so that's been really good. We've been, we've been working for over a year on leveling these courses and creating these heterogeneous groups. Also similar, we've been using, again, early-release time, professional development time, we worked, met over the summer as well, and then we were able to get an academic support program for social studies. And it's nice, because it kind of works on a rotating schedule, we have two teachers that run it, and when students don't come, they actually are able to come into our classrooms and help out, which has been wonderful, to have some sort of surprise assistant that comes in and assists with activities, tests, reviews, all sorts of things. So that's been really wonderful. In terms of what's happening in the classrooms, I think the thing I'd want you to know is that, when I look at the groups that I have, and I teach three of these classes, one is a co-talk class with a special educator, I have a hard time telling who was supposed to be in one level or another, which is a great thing to think about, that I don't know who would have been in, say, CP or AE, that these students are, in a lot of ways, the same in terms of their capabilities and intelligence. It's more rather an issue of skills, really, if I wanna be honest. I think a lot of- I think a lot of the things that we're going to be doing in these, with these scaffolded lessons is hopefully really teaching students how to be good students, teaching them the types of skills they need to be successful. I can see a lot of them that struggle, know it, they know what they probably need to do, but don't really know how to go. And I think the nice thing about this class is we're making access points for students to enter the environment, this high level of learning environment, and really engage with it in ways that I think can be unbelievably successful. And I think that's probably the thing I'm enjoying the most about this unleveled class. I'm thinking also about the fact that having taught three of the four levels in world history for almost 20 years, the curriculum is identical. And I think for a long time, students really mark themselves on what level I'm in, when they sort of forget that what's being taught is actually the same thing, that the history is the same. The difference is things like how much we scaffold the curriculum, the pace that we use, the types of readings that we do, the activities that we're engaging in. And those are the things that create those access points. And so the nice thing about being in this cohort, we've all taught different levels. Honors all the way down to CP1. And we're sort of collecting all that and really fusing it together to create a curriculum that has as many of those access points as possible. And I think that's been the greatest thing. And kids are rising to that challenge. My students are doing really well. And I was very concerned for a long time that this assessment they're going to have, this project, and I'm, I'm in the process, literally this afternoon grading these projects, I'm thinking, these are really good. And these tests are really good. And this was a hard test. And I was worried that they were going to do well. But again, we're working on creating these access points so students can be involved. The thing I worry about is of course the students that struggle, the ones that are sort of on the fringes of this class. And that's something I think we're going to have to really watch carefully and really make sure that we have some, either some sort of a safety net or we have a plan. I know the few students that I worry about, I've, I've been trying to be really diligent, emailing their other teachers, emailing special educators, connecting with counselors, creating sort of like a team of people that are working with these students to make sure that we can provide as many supports as possible. So, you know, having, as Amanda talked about mentors in the classroom, having other students that are already good students and then they can model that great behavior with students, that's going to be really important. Having co-teachers, special educators, other teachers pushing into classrooms. There's a, for example, a speech-language pathologist who's been offering to come in and push into my classes, not necessarily as a speech-language pathologist, but as another person, another adult, another teacher. And I think those are going to be the ways that we're going to be successful with this, is really engaging everybody to be part of that, that classroom environment. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Carrie Chartier and I teach science. And I think this is my 24th year at AB, but I may have lost count. I'm going to talk a little bit differently, more about my own experiences as a teacher who's been teaching unleveled classes now for a little bit longer. I teach biology and anatomy and physiology. And I decided to unlevel anatomy and physiology about six years ago, five or six years ago. We used to have a human body that was sort of CP1 level and then everything else, you know? And I noticed that my human body class, and then I also taught CP1 biology, and I noticed the same thing with this, that the kids didn't really have like a high opinion of themselves as learners or achievers. And despite my best efforts to tell them that they are bright and capable and they're 15 or 16 or 17 years old and your big brains aren't there yet and you're still going to grow and learn and you're going to get to college and you're going to get chemistry. And they didn't believe me. And that was really, like, I took that to heart because I do really believe that every kid can learn and it's up to us to create environments for them that they can access that curriculum. So I just kind of decided to do it and I just put everybody together in my anatomy first and, you know, CP1 to AP Chem. And it was remarkable, the first year. Some of those kids that I knew were maybe would have been in the human body class, integrating friends with, developing relationships with, being in groups with. And I was like, oh my God, they don't think that they're in the dumb class anymore, their words. It was remarkable. And I was like, I'm on to something here. And then I just sort of tried to figure out, how am I going to create environment for each of these students to be able to learn and grow? And then this sort of, I could talk about this forever, I promise I won't. But I get so excited about it because I've seen it happen over and over and over again. I collapsed levels with CP1 and CP Bio three years ago. I don't even know if anyone really knew about that. I just told my department chair, I don't want to teach CP1. I just bring them in, bring them in, I got them, right? And so we did. And I started to just develop, like, figure out, where are they? How am I going to meet the needs of every single kid in my class? And it starts with basically building relationships. Like students like to be known and heard. So you sit down with them. You're like, what's your favorite hobby? What do you do? Like, you learn about them. And once they trust you, and then you say, here's the bar, and I know you can get there, and I'm going to give you this support, and then this support, and then this support. And before you know it, there they are. And it's been really exciting to be able to watch students say to me, I'm not good at science. And I'm like, hold up, you're 15, you don't even know how good you are or how good you can be. And then as they trust you, they believe it. And then all of a sudden, they're doing the work. So that's been something that I feel like I've been able to really like hone that craft over these few years. Because I had the luxury of time that other people don't have because they're being asked to do it so fast, I was able to really be so thoughtful about where are those access points that we were talking about? Like, how can I have this high-level experience for all kids, but then make sure that every student has access to that? So like, for example, I might give an article on something that we're doing, like an actual journal article with all the science jargon in there. And that's really hard to decode for some kids. But if I summarize each paragraph in like regular words, and then now they have that. Paragraph one, here's the main point. Paragraph two, here's the main point. Now they can converse with other kids that maybe didn't need that graphic organizer. They can just read the science and they can be challenged with that. So like, every kid is challenged, but then there's access and scaffolds for those who need it, where they need it. I think another thing for me, like with the relationship building, is just being super flexible around assessments, assignments, due dates, especially early on, because a lot of those kids will shut down and go, I can't do it. I'm like, what do you mean you can't do it? You haven't even tried, right? So how can I get you to try? Trust. And so they get lots and lots of opportunities to try and learn. And it might even be sitting with a kid who's struggling on a test and go, I'm just going to reteach this concept to you right now, in the moment. You're going to get a better grade, you're going to learn it, you're motivated to learn it. And isn't that our goal, that we learn? So I think we can be really, really creative about how we ask kids to learn and those high expectations that we set for them and help create a growth mindset for them so that they actually start to really like the learning. And there's a lot of kids that already know how to do school. So I'm mostly talking about, you know, how we can create lots of access for all students to get there. So the students that are there to begin with, those are kind of the easier students to teach because they're so motivated anyway. You can really push their thinking, you can get them to think this higher order or higher level thinking, but to bring everybody up to that level, that's my goal. So what do I need to do this? I think it's really important that we have class sizes and class composition that really support that type of heterogeneity in a classroom. To reiterate, you know, having the classroom supports, the assistants, co-teachers, mentors. And basically like time, time to create new scaffolding, new graphic organizers. Every year, kids change. They come in with different knowledge and different skills. So we have to be ready to, to constantly move. Like, there's almost nothing that I'm still teaching that I taught in the beginning, the way that I taught. There's one lab in anatomy, it's called Bones in the Bag, and that's really fun. Anyway, but other than that, it's, it's really like, it's creating opportunities to stay where the kids are, continue to meet them where they are, and build those relationships. Thank you for letting me talk.
Ready for questions? Okay, so before we go to questions, I just want to set the stage a bit here for the committee and the public. We're getting an update tonight. And in a month's time, so not next meeting, but the following meeting, we'll receive recommendations from the superintendent and the administration. That'll be sort of our first view, first read of the recommendations for course leveling. And then two meetings after that, so in yet another month, we will be voting those recommendations. So we're still collecting input, we're still hearing what, what both the teachers, the students and the public have to say. We've got a, a pretty nice timeline to, to meet the timeline for the high school to be able to put out their course of study for next year. But, but this is definitely not the, the end of the conversation, but it's definitely a great update. So thank you for that. With that, I will go around the room for questions. Ben?
Thank you. Last year, when you came and met, a number of students came up and approached the school committee and in particular, asking about how could having two levels or more create more separation and a greater divide within the community? Now with this new program being implemented, have you seen any segregation of students who may not be able to get into the AP courses as they were once in the AE courses and then being relegated to the college prep courses instead?
I can answer that. Yes, thank you. And that's important to note that after feedback from the school committee last April, we then did make it a focus of ours, especially at the beginning of the school year, to gather student feedback through student forums, student groups, going to different clubs, student council. And so we've, we've gotten a lot of student feedback. I think students are concerned that it might create more separation. I'll say to your first point about students not being able to get into APs, we have not seen that. Our AP numbers are, are larger. And I think we want to offer more opportunities, not have a trade-off for anyone or say that there's only a certain number of AP courses. I think if you look at our AP courses, you'll see the enrollments and the numbers have increased from last year to this year. When you talk to students who had that worry, and I just had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with students in our abs edge group around the worries of greater separation or segregation and also kind of limiting opportunities that the AE provided. When you talk to them about the courses that they were in last year that did this work, especially the ninth grade environmental course, ninth grade English last year, and our language courses, and you'll notice that our plan is not all at once, that we're moving slowly so that we can do this. Certain courses and departments are at different places at a time so that we can be thoughtful and watch it. You will hear, what I heard the students say is, oh yeah, that class that I was in, it was so great to have other types of students that I'm not used to having in my class because it really expanded the thinking in the entire class. And I will say that these were typically AE students and they were talking about the course that was not at the honors level, but say, environmental nine or English nine. And so that was really great to hear. They felt like the class was appropriately challenging them. And when we survey our students, which we've been doing mostly quarterly along with the teachers of the classes that are more heterogeneous, they report the same thing, that the students feel appropriately challenged, even the students who would have been in AE before and now are in that more signature level course. We also have seen that in just that short time that we've been doing this, that there is access for students to move into the AP course. And so we, though, I will say, is really too early to tell about the overall mobility because we haven't done it that long. And so that is something that we, we want to watch. But I would say, overall, it is a worry. And when we drill down into the specifics of when we've been doing it and asking the students and looking at the data, we've been, we've seen positive results and feedback. And we want to continue to watch that.
Genshin, and then Rebecca.
Okay. Jeez. Thank you for, thank you for the update. I just have one question. So from the sounds of it, that the educators and administrators have done a lot of work during your school, in addition to your schoolwork, your teaching, right? My question is that when you look at the course leveling, the changes and all the scaffoldings that needs to be provided to the students in order for the students to be successful, do you feel you have, the number of staff you have right now, is it adequate, inadequate? Or if it's inadequate, what do you think? I guess you, do you need extra staff or do you think you can do it with the existing number of staff? It's long, sorry, Adam.
Who wants to answer that question? I also want to say something.
Hi, thank you for your question. I mean, I think that every educator would say we always need more of everything, right? So yeah, I mean, if you're offering it up, we'll take more stuff. I think that, you know, it probably, for, for me, I don't know, everyone has a different opinion. But like for me, the, the hardest part was the first, was sort of saying, okay, now I know what I want to do. And then doing that, that those first few years when you're sort of really developing those supports, that takes a lot of extra time. I don't know that for the development of the curriculum, you need extra people because that's kind of the collaboration. So it's really more time. But then the supports in the classroom, having extra co-teacher, like having co-taught classes, I think we've all that have experienced them have felt like that is a real benefit, especially if the co-teacher knows the content and knows how to teach. So that, I think, not, not to say that there aren't co-teachers that aren't doing well, but they, they come with different skill sets too. And so if you might have a special educator who's a co-teacher that doesn't, you know, for me, like, doesn't know the biology and doesn't really do the day-to-day curriculum development, it's not truly a co-teacher, really. It's more of, I would say, it can be more of a, like, an aide. So I think having people, like giving opportunities to have co-teachers trained in their content areas that they're going to be co-teaching in. And oh, yeah, right? Is there anything?
Sorry, that was long.
Becca.
Hi, thanks for coming. I'm very excited about this whole process and I could speak at length about my own experience at AB, but I will spare us the time. I had a couple of questions. One, I have the unfortunate duty to be the budget chair. So I'd like to know, for class sizes, is there a number that you could provide that is a really appropriate number of students per class that ensures you can reach everybody? And then my other question is, what sort of incentives are you able to provide to draw in those student mentors? Thank you.
I didn't quite hear the second question.
Okay. Do you, do, okay. So in terms of, in terms of class size, I mean, that's an excellent question. I think we would all say that smaller class sizes are really helpful. And I think that just class size can sometimes be misleading because often we have to look at the students who are in front of us and what supports they need. And so sometimes a class of fourteen can be similar to a class of 24, right? And last year, we went through exercises and analysis around class size in, in the high school. I would say we very much want to keep them as low as possible. And I wouldn't want to personally ask the teachers to go any larger than what we're at right now. And I think, you know, as we talk about our multilingual learners, especially new ones who we may have the fortune of, you know, welcoming into our district and just all the supports that our students need, just in what they're dealing with in life and then the supports that they need for their IEPs, 504s, just general assistance, that really matters when you're talking about class size. So the class supports that Carrie's talking about are important in order to actually give you that number, I would say. We want them to be as low as we possibly can get them. Mentors? Okay. Well, not like five, yeah.
I did mention, this is my first year having a mentor and I was sort of a little resistant to it before. And I, I think we've all been here for 20 plus years. But we, I, to both classes, I mean, I want more now. colleague that has two, and I think they feed off each other, and they support each other. And I have one, kind of like a, you know, a shy, and I have to kind of help her be the mentor to be the, you know, and come, and, which is great, you know, but, but at the same time, I'm supporting her, because it's, again, early, and it's her first time doing it. I do think they get credit for the class five credits. But I also would love the mentoring program to have more training for the mentors. Like, I would really like them to come in and know what to do right away. I think they meet for the first time, like, the first day of school, and then they're in our classrooms the second day of school. So, I, I think that training for them would be great.
I'll say that quickly. So, I've had, I almost always have a mentor, and this is the first year I don't have a mentor, because I think I forgot the signup. And it's, it's horrible to not have a mentor, truly. And they do get volunteers and they get credits, but I think the other thing that I found for years, and I would often ask my former students to be mentors, and they like, found that to be, I think they were really proud of themselves that they were asked, because what that told them is, "I was really smart, and I did good in your class, and you think I'm that good that I can actually help other kids, even though they're younger?" And there was, I think, a great source of pride, like, "Oh, well, you know, so-and-so's done this project because he was in this class three years ago." And they look up to that student. I know there, almost every year, really nice relationships that get made with older students, particularly students that maybe don't have a lot of friends, and don't have a lot of connections. And I think it's, it just, I think for them personally, maybe they'll go into it for credits and for volunteer hours. I think in the end, they get out a lot more than they bargained for. And I think, obviously, we do, too. So, I concur. I mean, the more we can have, the better. But I, what Amanda says is right. I think it would be really nice, too, to do more training, really about how to, to talk to students and how to approach them, because sometimes, students will be really reluctant to get help, especially from a peer, from teachers, you know, that, that's the teacher's job. But to have a peer come up, sometimes it can be a little bit awkward. And there are some teachers in the high school that really just have incredible programs for their mentors in their classes that really work. So, I think we also need to be tapping into some of those teachers and asking them, like, "How do you use your mentors?" And I've been doing that with another teacher in the associate's department, and there's a lot we can learn about how we can, and I say the word "use," and that sounds terrible, but how we can really, like, this is an untapped resource, and I think literally, everybody wins. We win as teachers, the students win, and the mentors win as well, so.
Tori.
Thank you so much for coming. I love hearing the teachers' voices in this, and your stories are, I'm just sitting here grinning, because it makes me feel good. I'm also really appreciating the discussion about the mentors, having both a student who was a peer mentor, and observed that in being a mentor, she learned almost as much from the students that she worked with. And so, she felt that that was very much a balanced situation. I know that's something sometimes that comes up with mentorship, but I think it goes a lot towards building our community. And also, having a student who benefits greatly from having peer mentors. Thank you. Please, more peer mentors. I concur. Train them, yes. My question for you is, it feels like sometimes, there are a lot of assumptions out there about this process, and what it's going to be, and what it's going to be like. What question do you wish people would ask you about the course leveling?
I would want you to ask me what's, what's going right, because there's a lot of things that are going right. I think I agree with what you said, that there's, I think, a great misconception that this is going to be really awful and hard, and we're going to regret what we've done. And I think that that's, that's A, not really the right attitude to have about this, first of all, but also, I think it really undermines, like, the goals that we have for this, which is like, to get every student to a point where they can reach their highest potential. And I think Carrie talked about that, and saying that there's a lot of students who just, it's not something that the teacher has or hasn't done, is that historically, they just don't feel valued as a student. And that, that means a lot to students, like, and they might not say it or acknowledge that, really, but like, to know that someone values your inherent potential, because everyone's sort of, you know, they have that, like, light that goes off. It doesn't go off at the same time for every student. Some kids, it goes up in seventh grade, other kids, it's like junior year, some kids, it's sophomore in college. And, and being aware that that light's going to come on at a different time. Are you making fun of me?
No, I said that was me in sophomore in college.
Like, that, I think there's a lot of empowerment about making students feel empowered, and if we can create a situation where a student, and, and all the three, the three of us can tell you that, for a really long time at the high school, there's this huge break between, like, the CP student and the AE student, the honor student. And it's, as a teacher of primarily CP classes, it was really demoralizing to sort of feel like, like, "My students aren't worth it? Like, they're not good students?" Like, they are good students. You don't even, you're not even in this class, you don't even know what you're talking about. And the idea that we're in a class now where we can really have, you know, maybe some really top-tier students, and maybe some students who struggle, but we're all in the same boat together, and I'm not teaching a whole lot differently, not really. I mean, again, like I said earlier, the curriculum's identical, but I wish that people would know that, that there's a lot of great things that can be gained, again, and the focus is on the student, about helping them find their inherent worth and really valuing the student, and then helping them find the place where they can jump in and be part of that experience that everyone's enjoying, so.
I love that question. Hi, Tori, thank you. I think a question that I would like to be asked is, "How am I going to challenge each student?" And I actually talked to one of my mentors today, and asked him if it would be okay if I shared a story that, that involved him at school committee tonight. So, here I am, I'm going to share my story. This is a very bright student that is taking AP classes. He's a senior. I had him last year in my unleveled, you know, heterogeneous anatomy class. And one day, let me back up. So, I also wrote his letter of recommendation for college, and I do a little form, and one of the questions was, "What is the one thing you remember about my class?" And he wrote, "The day that I brought, that you handed something back to me, and I didn't get the grade I thought I would get, and I came up to you and said, 'Why didn't I get a better grade?'" And I said, and I don't remember this, but he, he did, and he said, that I said, that "I know the work that you're capable of, and this isn't it, and I want you to do what you're capable of." And that apparently lit a fire under this kid, and then for the rest of the semester, everything was like, reaching, reaching, reaching. And I read that, and I was like, "I did that?", right? And, and it was so cool. And I've been thinking about that a lot in this course leveling conversations that we're having, because that kid, like, he, he just needed to be told he could do more. And this is a kid who's already high achieving. So, I think a lot of parents worry, or kids worry, that if they're in a, in a unleveled or more heterogeneous class, that they're going to be bored. And it's our job to make sure that they're not. And there's so many ways that you can make opportunities for students. It's not more work, it's higher-order thinking. It's, "Okay, you can do a little bit better with your science literacy skills, you can do more." Meanwhile, still scaffolding for all those other kids. So, I just wanted to share that, because that was something that I felt like was really kind of cool.
Like I said, for math, it's, you know, a little bit different. We're, like, working really hard, and I guess, I, I don't know what question you would ask me, but I would like you to understand that it's going to take us some years, and it's right now, the daunting task. I teach Algebra I, I teach geometry. So, we're being asked to, to fix, not fix, that's not the right word, to, to work on the geometry for next year. We are, we have a prep period in place to work on the Algebra I curriculum this year, and now, at the same time, the same teachers have to, you know, are, are having to do it for next year. So, maybe a question like, "What do you need for time? What, how long do you think this rollout is going to take for, for you as teachers who are doing this work?"
Andrew.
Thanks, and thank you again for, for being here. Actually, the question I had is similar to some of the answers you had just now, but I'm curious, have these adjustments allowed you to shift the depth the classes or students are able to get to into the subjects from where they were before, because you have more time or less time? I'm just curious how that, this has adjusted their ability to get deeper in or less deep in?
Well, I, I think the, the collaboration with students and the whiteboard work, definitely, I see the, the impact on that, that students have, that they can work together, and they do have a deeper understanding of problems that doing together. So, I think that is successful.
I think for me, one of the things that I've found through this process over the last few years, that what it allows me to do is not so much about the content, but more about how kids think, how we get them to problem-solve, how I, how I can encourage them to work on science skills, skills that really are transferable. Like, I have this super cool human performance lab that I was able to build with a grant that I got from Toshiba, and it's like university-grade, like, we can do, like, blood lactate testing, and like, all kinds of, like, really cool stuff in there. And I just basically set them free and, and say, "Design, learn the equipment, design experiments, do the experiments." And like, we can do that, I think, because we're scaffolded. Like, I wouldn't be able to let them play with my really expensive equipment without that, you know? So, I think it's allowed me to give them opportunities to think and grow, and like, really get excited about science. I love that question.
I'll, I'll be quick. I think one of the things about working in the cohort with these other world, particularly world history teachers, and we all know the curriculum really well, is we're, we've been asked now to think deeply about, like, what is the really important stuff that we want students to know? Like, really, like, if we're looking at an entire unit or the whole year curriculum, like, what is sort of the essential information? And then really thinking about, like, how we can do that, A, with these supports and access points, but also really thinking deeply about, like, how we can take that, that content or that concept or something, and really go somewhere with it. Because now, we have sort of like, I want to say we've eliminated the superfluous stuff, but we've, we've sort of boiled it down to, like, its essence of what we really want to do, and we're able to, I think, to just maybe even focus a little bit more directly on the topics that we want to explore, that we feel like, again, after twenty years of teaching, this is the stuff that I want these kids to walk away from. Like, yes, those dates and names are great, but this particular concept about, say, change, this is what's important. And, and I think in a lot of ways, because we've done that and created scaffolds, we've almost sort of like, in some way, almost exploded the class, which has been really nice. Again, it's the first year we're really doing it, and so, time will tell, but what's nice is that I feel like there's that investment in, in really having that focused opportunity to really go deeply on things that we, we collectively have agreed are really valuable.
Last question for Leela, and then we can move on.
Thank you for coming and chatting with us. It was really helpful to hear some of the stories about how it's actually been going. And I also was a mentor, and I found one of the things I didn't expect was how helpful it was when I went to go TA in college, because I already had some of those dynamics down. I had one question, so I really appreciated kind of hearing tangibly about how some students are kind of blossoming and like, seeing themselves as capable of doing school. And I was wondering, you had also mentioned that some students are still kind of struggling a little bit despite the attempts to scaffold, and was wondering what you may need to meet the need, given that kind of the other end of that is like, a year of really struggling can really hurt a student and their confidence. So, what kind of supports would you need to be able to meet those students where they're at currently?
So, I'm in this situation right now. I think the thing that's been really useful for me is really connecting with special educators, other teachers who teach that same student, and that time to be able to really look at work that they've completed or haven't completed. And just getting a sense of, like, who this person is, because the person that I have in front of me in my classroom, that's not the whole person, right? Like, the students come into our classrooms with all kinds of life experiences, baggage that we know nothing about, and I think sometimes, just being aware of that can be really helpful in figuring out what I need to be doing in order to help this student, what I can connect. So, as an example, I have a student that I had a hard time connecting with, and then I saw him at an event that my own child was doing, and I later mentioned it to him, I said, "Hey, I saw you at that, that basketball tournament this weekend." And all of a sudden, now he's walking by my class and saying, "Hi." So, like, I, I needed to know that, like, I needed to know a little bit more, and then I learned more about that, the connection of that student with that particular sport. And, and that seems like a really sort of small thing, detail, but I don't think it's that small to him. And I think we've been able to figure out, by talking to, again, special educators, school psychologists, other teachers, what are the kinds of things that are going to be motivating for him, who he connects with really well, who he might not connect with well, the types of assignments that go well for him, the things that are difficult. So, I think, if I'm thinking about what I need, I think what I need, and I, I know, I feel like this is the word we've said all day, which is sort of time to be able, but also that, like, collaboration opportunity, to be able to sit and really meet with other teachers, to know the whole student, and not just the one that sits in my class for fifty-five minutes a day, because that's not really the whole person, right? There's so much more to that person than that. So, just having a chance to know that student, and then know them really well quickly, like, at the beginning of the year, not waiting till January to make those types of connections, but really jumping on that immediately. It can be hard to meet special educators and other teachers, so being able to do that quickly, I think, is really important.
Hi, me again. So, I think that that's such a great question, and I think for me, that my answer is sort of like, twofold. Like, to kind of piggyback off what Karen was saying, like, every day is an opportunity for a kid to learn. And I think that we, as educators, have to remember, it's not about us, it's about them. And so, if you have a student that, like, we might say, "Oh, that student is struggling." What does struggling mean to that kid? Like, are we projecting that onto them, or is that actually what their experience is? And so, I've really learned to, like, when I meet a kid where they are, all I want is to be able to progress that child forward compared to themselves, not compared to anyone else. And so, there may be, you know, so I teach the sophomore bio, so I might not get that student very far my year, but if I've created a safe, supportive environment where they can come and be, and be themselves, then maybe next year, that teacher picks them up and they move them a little bit forward. And a lot of times, it's just growth and development. They're bright and capable, they're just not ready. And if we shut them down and say, "Well, you're struggling, you're not getting a good grade, or you're doing this, or you're running around the room," or whatever, like, then we're just giving them more reasons to not want to be in school. I had a student one year that I, every day, I was like, "Maybe today is the day he'll talk to me, maybe today is the day he'll learn." And it wasn't until the beginning of fourth quarter that he started doing work. And I was like, "Okay, we're it, let's do it." And like, didn't he pass the MCAS? Like, and I mean, and then junior year, he, I checked in, and he was doing great. Look, he just needed time. So, I think that's one piece, is right, like, that, but then you have some kids that, for whatever reason, no matter what we do, or how we scaffold, or any number of times we try to connect with them, that it's just not going to be the right fit. And I feel like we need more alternative programs that provide students that we cannot figure out a way to get them to feel safe and comfortable. And I know that that's something that we've really talked about at the high school. We've had some in the past with some success. We really don't have a lot of alternative programs right now that are, you know, off-site, where kids can do something very, very different, not like an in-school thing where they're just doing regular school, but just in one room, like, really thoughtful, creative, alternative programs, I think, could really be helpful. They just cost a lot of money. Rebecca didn't hear that.
Okay, so, I started off saying that our goal was to get more kids through Algebra I in one year, and I just, we worry as a department that that's not right for all students, and I think we need places for those students to land, like, maybe an alternative program, but maybe an Algebra I Part One is what they need, and that's where they need to be. And so, we're, like, if we have some of these students that aren't going to make it, they're going to have to repeat Algebra I, and then they're going to land in the same place that if they did Algebra I Part One and Part Two successfully, they would end up, you know, in the same place their senior year, as if, as if, you know, and we're, we're doing everything we possibly can to support, and, and this, that, and the other thing, but, you know, a small cohort of students may not make it, and now, they've got poor grades on their transcript and repeating courses. So, we really, so far, we really feel like we still need, like, a Part One, Part Two still on the, you know, in the, on the books, so that they have a place that, you know, that, that they can land. And that, again, this is the first time, and it's October, and we're doing the best we can, but like, we really worry about some of the, some of the students that we're pushing to do this.
Excellent. Amanda, Karen, Carrie, thank you guys very much for coming and speaking with us. I just want to close this out by saying, I think that where we've gotten to over the sort of intervening months from our first presentation is significant, and I think it's really great to be here, sort of hearing about the stories from the ground about how it's going, and it's wonderful to hear the progress that's been made. I think for the committee, we're gonna, we're gonna see presentations continuing along that sort of, that support our committee goals and the district goals, but we're also gonna get presentations along the way that are gonna say, "We're gonna have really difficult budget times." And so, I think for me, the closing part that I want to say is, as you come back to us with recommendations, those are gonna come after we hear a little bit more about what our budget situation is for next year, and I'd love to see additional pathways or considerations for the budget constraints that are responsive to both what you've learned and what we've learned in the intervening month, because I'm afraid that if we're sort of stuck on this track and in this process, and we fully support that, we're gonna do that at the detriment for other services, or we're gonna have to support other services at the detriment of this. So I think that, for me, that's the next sort of step, is how do we, how do we blend the great work that we're doing now and the track that we're on with what we know is gonna be our budget reality this coming year? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation. Peter, I think you have a brief update for the committee on the planning for Acton's designation as an emergency migrant shelter.
Yeah, so, you'll notice there were two different versions of memos. One was the day after we learned that we would, you know, be fortunate enough to welcome a group of new students, and the other was after we had four or five days to wrap our heads around it and start to learn some more information. So just to give you a really brief overview, last week, we learned from the state that Acton would be the site host for a 33-room shelter. It's at the Minuteman Inn, which is located right on Route 2. It is formerly the Concordian Inn, but a new owner has bought that, renovated it, and so, the shelter portion of the Minuteman Inn is going to be the back set of buildings, which has 33 rooms. The front set of buildings is some longer-term rentals that are in there. So, we're working on the plan to launch this. So, you know, we are fortunate that we've been assigned a provider. We know, we've heard some really challenging stories from other communities where, you know, they had, you know, a call on a day that said there was a hotel in town that had, you know, 300 individuals now living in it, and they need to enroll in school. And, you know, it was after the, you know, families had moved into the shelter and just really poor communication. That is not our situation at all. We have a lot of lead time, a lot being a month, in this world, right? But, but that is an ample, you know, amount of lead time to try and get this done. You know, we don't know the number of students that are actually going to enroll in school until families arrive in the shelter, but the provider has a process in place to notify us. We're working through procedures to get families registered, to go on-site, to welcome families, and really just help them feel part of the AB community quickly. You know, we do understand, at least at this time, that the majority of families will speak Haitian Creole. We believe that the largest migration right now coming to this area are families from Haiti, so we're preparing for that. We also know that there's probably going to be some students ages three to five who are gonna qualify for services through the pre-K, and we're gonna have to work through that assessment process, and we're making plans around that area as well. We got to a point where we decided, looking at kind of the capacity of our multilingual learners, classroom space, looking at space within schools, and trying to think about keeping students who are already experiencing a lot of disruption, helping to create a cohort where they can see some peers that might be with them at the shelter, and also in schools and classrooms, really developing that cohort model. We didn't want to spread kids around the district, so we looked at Miriam Elementary School, as well as the junior high and high school. We also have told the Gates staff, and we're involving Gates in the planning process, that if we reach an elementary enrollment that we just can't manage in one elementary school, then we'd look at Gates as well. Again, that was just looking at the capacity of all of our schools and making some decisions about what we thought was going to be the best fit for students. Every grade level is gonna have some unique opportunities and challenges. I think one of the things we're, you know, really thinking about at the high school level is, you know, that we might end up having some students, as we, we've already gained over the last two years, who are qualified as SLIF, which is kind of, they have interrupted educational periods or limited educational periods. You know, and we're, we're seeing already some students moving into the district who maybe haven't had education in a traditional sense in two years. They've had a lot of life experience that gives them great maturity, but yet, the actual formal education might be interrupted by a couple of years, or they're entering at a different grade level of education than what their age might be in Massachusetts. And so, you know, one of the challenges, and you heard this a little bit, about thinking about high school programming for kids, is always something that we have to consider. And because we are still relatively low incidence of this kind of SLIF designation, it's hard to create programs that have an efficiency to them. So that's something we're certainly thinking about as we do this. One of the things, in addition to probably the, I'm guessing 15 to 20 students that will welcome into our schools, when students have already been in the United States, in Massachusetts in particular, they may already have been enrolled in another school district as part of their experience. If that's the case, they qualify under the McKinney-Vento Act as homeless, and that means that they have a choice to either enroll at Acton-Boxborough schools, or continue to attend their school of origin. In that case, Acton-Boxborough, because they live and reside here, is responsible for providing the transportation to whatever school they're already enrolled in. That's something that, you know, we have a process already in place for, it's certainly going to be a budget implication for us, as we think about how we're managing funds over the course of the year. But we're, we're working through that. What we heard from the shelter providers is they're seeing roughly a 60-40% split, where about 60% of the families are coming new into Massachusetts, and they're, so, they might enroll right in schools, and about 40% of families might have already been in another community shelter somewhere. So that's certainly something we'll be planning for as well. I just provided an overview of, you know, the two kind of planning teams that we have going simultaneously, one in terms of operations, one in terms of teaching and learning, with a sense of the different topics that, you know, we're working on over the next couple of weeks, as we welcome families. Personnel-wise, I think this is where, you know, personnel and money are the two areas that school committee obviously has influence over. From a personnel standpoint, we do not have the multilingual educator capacity to serve additional students, we didn't plan for that. So we have posted for an additional multilingual teacher, and that posting went up, I believe, yesterday. Additionally, as we talk to other communities that have welcomed students, one of the most critical elements was having a family coordinator that works for the district, but actually spends a substantial amount of every day onsite at the shelter. I think one of the things that we learned from the provider of the shelter was that we should not assume that families will have any type of cellphone or internet access to be able to easily communicate back and forth. We also know that, you know, sometimes families arriving from Haiti, while the spoken language is often Haitian Creole, sometimes, you know, formal education in Haiti sometimes ends at sixth grade, so there really needs to be a lot of verbal communication back and forth that's in a native language. Written communication is not gonna be the preferred method for some of our families, and we have to think that through. And so, having that family support person in place to be able to really just on a daily basis, connect with each family, update them on what's going on in the schools for their child, make sure they understand what's happening, that they're engaged in the schools in appropriate ways, and feeling welcomed is a really critical element, so we've also posted for that. We have, you know, a preference on that, that we do want someone whose language is Haitian Creole, and is obviously bilingual, so that they can really help us communicate with families and feel welcome. And then we also heard from some of the other districts that have welcomed families, that because some of the students will have followed paths that, for some, can be very traumatic along the way, before they arrive in Massachusetts and in our community, there can be a real level of dysregulation among some of the kids, which is compounded by the fact that they've experienced trauma, and they also are now in an environment where they don't speak the language, and they're coming in, learning English for the first time, and that can be a really challenging experience for students. So having some staff in the schools who can speak the language and interact with kids is really important to some of the communities. So we've also posted for some classroom assistant positions that are native speakers as well, that we can use to help support students and families, so that's something we're, we're thinking about as well. From a funding standpoint, there is funding that comes to the district. The standard funding for the shelter program is that for every student that is enrolled in our schools, there's a reimbursement to the district of $104 per student per day that they're enrolled. That equates to about $18,000 per year, is the maximum allotment per student. That is pretty much what Acton-Boxborough spends to educate our students. We're right at that $18,000 range. So if we, you know, have 10 students enroll, that means we'll have about $180,000, you know, based on the, the days of enrollment, but about $180,000 we can count on. Similarly, if we get 20 students, we would double that amount. So there is some money for the staffing that we're gonna need, and if we get on the high end of the number of students we predict, we might have to add some more staff, but we need, want to be flexible, and we don't want to overcommit early. We want to be prepared, but not overcommit ourselves. In terms of reimbursement process, it's, as I said, it's up to $18,000 a year, and it's based on the, the daily attendance. That is reimbursed quarterly, so there's a cash flow process to that, that will help us, and, and gives me confidence that we'll be in a good place with that. The piece that, you know, I do worry a little bit about is the transportation under McKinney-Vento. We're already projecting that we're about $200,000 over what we budgeted for the year. We have several students and, that are, are going long distances in order to attend our schools here, that we're transporting from other places in Massachusetts, because they want to be in school here, and we want them here. So, you know, that reimbursement, however, is the following fiscal year. And so, you know, we should not count, there will be no McKinney-Vento funds coming in for transportation services in this year, that will come in next year. I don't, I think that's actually a February reimbursement typically for McKinney-Vento. However, there's a pilot program going at the state now, but they only have 22 districts already enrolled in it, where they're going to reimburse in November instead of February. So it's basically a pre-audit reimbursement, and then they true-up the, the difference in the audit later. So, you know, that, that will be the financial challenge for us, is managing transportation costs as we go through the year. I also want to point out, it's not a challenge that we don't already do on a daily basis, right? We have had students who are homeless for many, many years, and we have been providing transportation under McKinney-Vento for that period of time as well, so it's something that's just ongoing, and it's something that just requires a lot of thought and planning, and, you know, sometimes, quite honestly, good luck. You know, Dave Vertolino always used to say, you know, "It's better to be lucky than good." You know, but when you, when it comes to transportation costs, sometimes that, that's what you're dealing with. Community assistance and donations, as soon as I sent out an email to our staff, we had people immediately emailing me saying, "What can I donate? You know, how can we help? Can our kids get involved? Can families get involved?" Yes is the answer, and not yet is also the answer. The shelter, they've done this many times, one of the first things they'll do is they want, they provide all the necessities: toiletries, clothing, shoes, whatever families need immediately is going to be provided by the shelter, because that's part of what they do in their mission. Then they do a needs assessment within the first few days that a family is in the shelter, and then they have an exact inventory of what families need before we start going out and getting donations, because they just don't have capacity to have a lot of donations that will never be used. And so, we just want to say thank you to families who are already reaching out and want to do something to help, and we will get in touch with you probably about two weeks after our families move in. So we're just asking people to be on hold. We will, on our end, be coordinating all of our volunteerism and donations through the Resource Center. We actually are, in a way, are very lucky that we chose to proceed with the Resource Center this year, because it situates us, situates us very well to welcome new families into the community. We now have a process, and we have a resource network in place. I guess, you know, I'll just reiterate what I said before in closing, that, you know, as a community, we've been welcoming people into our community for decades. This is not new. And we are good at it, we're a welcoming community, we just want to reiterate our core values, that we are here for our students, and we are here for our families. We don't care how long our students and families have been living in our community, they are all our students and families, and we're gonna just really remain steadfastly committed to those principles. And, you know, in, in a way, we're really excited to have this opportunity to welcome some kids that are gonna give all of our other students, you know, some really cool experiences and friendships, and just like, all of the other families in our district. So happy to answer some questions, but that's kind of what we know as of today, and tomorrow we'll know more.
Thanks, Peter. Questions from the committee? Yen Shin, and then Lila.
I just have a question on the family coordinator. Can the town provide a social worker instead of having the district hire an additional staff? Or are you coordinating with the town of Acton for...
So the, the shelter actually provides services. We actually have town of Acton staff on our planning team as well, and they'll also provide social services. The reason that you want a school liaison is, school is probably the most complicated environment a lot of families are gonna have to navigate. One of the frustrating things, I think, for families coming in, is that one of their primary goals is to get employment and gain independence, so that they can get permanent living. However, the process to get work status takes, you know, many, many months for a lot of these families, and, but yet, the kids go right into school, and you need someone who knows the schools, talks, can go in, talk to teachers about what's going on with a kid, go talk to the family. And that's a pretty school-specialized piece. It's also one of the reasons why they do give the school districts additional funding to be able to do this.
Thanks for sending out the memo, it was really helpful to outline all of that. My one question is, have you heard anything about unaccompanied minors coming and living here?
No, I think the shelter process might require that they have an adult living with them.
Tori?
Yeah, thank you for the memo, and thank you for spelling out that there's also some funding sources tied into that, that gave me a finance committee moment of, okay, there's some... One thing that caught my attention, though, you mentioned that a lot of the families may not have cell phones or access to internet. Are we worried, as we're issuing students' Chromebooks, that we are putting them in a really difficult situation to actually be able to get their homework done once they've left the school grounds?
Yeah, we actually already keep a stock of Wi-Fi hotspots and have the accounts for them, so we give those out anyway to students who might need internet access. You know, we also will work with the shelter, and, and one of the things the provider knows is that they create kind of a homework space at the shelter as well that's provisioned, so that, I think we'll be okay in that regard. I think it's more maybe thinking through, what types of supports might kids need to be able to complete homework, as opposed to just the technology.
Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you for the update, Peter. All right, we're gonna go a little out of order here, we're gonna move the school committee communication goal update to after the subcommittee and member reports, and the first subcommittee report we're gonna have is on the Health Insurance Trust. So I know we've got some members from the trust here to present. While they're coming up, Andrew, do you want to give us a quick sort of intro?
We have with us Stephen Noon, who is the master of all things Health Insurance Trust. I defer to him in all things, he's put together presentations, as well as our representative from Gallagher, and I'll let them introduce themselves. Hi, folks, welcome to it.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Steve Noon, I am the current chair of the Health Insurance Trust, and I am the member of the Acton Finance Committee. And with me, I have Anthony Lively, who's the vice president of Gallagher Benefit Services, and I brought him to back me up. He's only been on the job since July 1st, so you can't blame him for anything I'm gonna Okay. I know John Peterson lectured you guys on Health Insurance Trust a couple of years ago, but since you're, some of you are new, I'll give you the one-slide primer. Health Insurance Trust serves both the town of Acton and the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. School District. Uh, and it is self insured. Um, we contract with Blue Cross Harvard Pilgrim, used to be Tufts, uh, to administer our programs like BPOs, HMOs, HSAs and Medicare supplements. The trust sets the rates, collects the contributions from the town and the district and pays the claims. We don't design your plans. We don't do co-pays, we don't do deductibles, we don't do any of that. So to protect ourselves from very large claims, we, um, engage in reinsurance or stop loss insurance. So that any individual claim reaches a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, then the reinsurance kicks in and they pay the amount over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we have an independent treasurer, a consultant, uh, to advise on rates and programs. We have an annual audit conducted by a, you know, independent CPA. So this is the trust financial performance, um, since, uh, just go twelve. Um, the red line is our expenses, the blue lines are revenue. Until about two, FY18, we were staying ahead of the game. Um, the kind of orange goldish line is our ending fund balance or our essentially reserves. And, um, the gray line is our profit and loss. So since FY18, things have been going downhill. Now, part of that was by design. At that point in time, our reserves, um, were getting up close to eight million dollars, a little less than fifty percent of our expenses. So we decided to, um, burn off some reserves by having, I guess, below performance rates. We had a zero rate increase year one year, we had a four, uh, and boy, did we effectively burn off our reserves. As soon as we were done with that, COVID hit. Um, I'm not responsible for the timing of that event. I'll take, I'm the only trustee left from the decision to burn off the reserves though. So, um, where we're at is, um, you want to know where the eight million went? Yeah. Um, maybe two million was just planned, um, reserve burning. Um, we have one claim, um, which is outside our reinsurance of seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. So we paid seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year on that one since around 2015. So that, that accounts for almost, you know, three and a half million of our reserve loss. Uh, it's an ongoing claim. Uh, the way it works is if the reinsurance, the reinsurance people won't pay for it, or if they will, they'll just add it to your premium. Uh, so they'll win one way or the other. Uh, so the current status is our reserves, uh, have pretty much fallen to zero. Um, that's despite the fact that our rate increases have been ten percent. Last year, this year, we have the equivalent, uh, ten percent. Last year's claims were up nine percent, nine point four percent versus the year before, they were down five percent. We had a loss on reinsurance of a million dollars. Premium is about one million three, uh, and we recovered, uh, around three hundred thousand. A year before, um, it was less than that. So we're dealing with a rapid increase in the level of claims. Uh, for the last three months, claims were running fifty percent higher than the same period in either of the last two years. Our deficits for the first two months of this year have totaled one point five million. Now, five hundred thousand dollars of that we think is coming back in reinsurance, but it hasn't happened yet. We still have some carryover from the Harvard Pilgrim data breach which occurred in March or April last year. So we're still seeing claims coming in now that should have been processed last year. We don't want, we don't know when that's going to stop. Uh, I had hoped it would be, um, done by now. And we do have a new rebate program with Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that'll save us maybe four hundred thousand dollars a year and it won't kick in until the second quarter of this year. So not enough to stem the tide. So this is what our trust deficits look like, uh, for the last couple of years. Um, as I said, we went along pretty much, um, going from, um, month to month, hovering around the break even line, not always breaking even, uh, but starting, um, in really June, uh, this past June, uh, things went downhill fast. Um, there was a seven hundred thousand dollar loss in June and about the equal amount in the first two months of this year. You know, we're up to one point five loss for the year already. So what would be needed? Well, to reestablish reserves to a minimally acceptable level, we need to raise about two point two million. To restore the trust back to a break even basis, we need about one point seven million. Without a cost reduction, the combined impact would almost be twenty percent. And two point nine billion of that, uh, would come from the town and the schools. Employees would see an increase of almost twenty percent. So individuals would see about fifty dollars or more a month, families a hundred and eighteen a month. But based on the last three months, even that may not be enough. Like I said, claims the last three months, uh, just have nothing, like nothing we've ever seen before. It's long been said on the trust, never look at three months worth of data, it tells you nothing. This is the one exception to that. So what do we know and what don't we know? We know that the, our claims are increasing at a pretty much alarming rates. We know we won't lose as much on stop losses last year because we've just about already recovered more than we did last year. We know the rates that we charge are not too low. Um, our rates are comparable to the state's program, the, the group insurance commission and the West Suburban Health Group. That's Wellesley, Dover, Holliston, Rentham, Dover, Sherborne, Wayland. We've compared comparable plans to those rates and, and we're five percent either way, uh, on those. We know most of our problem is coming from our HMO plans. We have, um, I think five different offerings. The HMO plans account for like ninety percent of the losses, uh, we've incurred in these two months. The ironic thing is those two plans were probably the best performing plans we had last year. We know that there's not a significant change in the, um, subscribership of those two plans. Same number of individuals and family subscribers in both, it just hasn't changed much. Um, well, so what we don't know is if this is just a large number of individual claims that are going to eventually be reimbursed, uh, from our insurance, or whether we're dealing with, um, a significant increase in utilization by all our subscribers. Be nice to have another month of data, but that probably won't happen until next week. Um, you know, our consultants say they're not seeing this in other places. So, um, what can I tell you? The situation is, is baffling to me at this point. But, um, I'm here because we can't ignore it. We're going to run out of money. So, um, we haven't been exactly idle. We, we, back in December, we put in an eight percent increase and like I said, the revised price, pricing model. So we'd have effectively another ten percent. We held our stop loss insurance premium level. We cut our administrative fees, both with Harvard Pilgrim and some of our own, and we hired a new consultant to look at all the options. October, this year, just last week, we adopted a new retiree coverage model that'll save the, the trust two hundred and thirty-three thousand and an equal amount for the retirees. Uh, and we've developed a bunch of cost saving options. So here are their options. They are not additive. It's a pick and choose thing. Uh, yes, we can raise rates and we may have to. But the cost savings, um, well, plan design and cost share are not within the authority of the trust to affect. Plan design could possibly save us a million four a year. Cost share, which is simply changing the split from seventy-five, twenty-five to seventy-thirty, could maybe save nine hundred thousand. Medicare migration could possibly save us five hundred thousand. This, we have some employees who are not eligible for Medicare. One of which we know is a, um, major claim. You can basically pay their penalties for not signing up and get them covered by Medicare, in which case we'd pay some fines or, not fines, but, uh, late fees and shift that liability over to Medicare. Pharmacy benefit management could save us a million dollars and this basically separates your prescription coverage from your medical coverage. You're probably, you, you're probably seeing it now, um, and you just don't know what the name is. Um, if you're dealing with CVS Caremark or Express Scripts or people like that, uh, that's a pharmacy benefit management. Right now, the benefits there go to our partners, Harvard Pilgrim and, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield. There's more savings to be had, uh, but we'd have to take that, uh, away from them to do it. And there is a possibility of going to, um, third party administrators. So the situation is serious. We, we don't know how, it's very serious. It could get more. Uh, yeah, there's a rosy scenario that says this is all, um, major claims and, and in six months, we'll be having huge reinsurance, uh, paybacks and, and, and we'll all be happy. I'm not an optimist and I'm in finance. But what we don't do in these cost saving options will need to be made up by rate increases. And like I said, um, the trust is doing, they're pursuing every one of these options now. Uh, actually it was pharmacy benefit management we've been looking at for over a year. Plan design and cost share though are, um, historically been collectively bargained. Last time it was done, it was done, I think seven years ago, it was done in a coalition bargaining, um, set up where, um, the town and the schools unions, uh, met with representatives of the town and, um, the school, uh, management and, and, and essentially agreed on, um, actually a change in split percent and a bunch of, um, plan design changes, uh, which saved us a lot of money. Like I said, it hasn't been done in seven years. It's not fun, none of these things are going to be easy or quick to implement. But, um, I did want to at least come before you and, I guess, sound the warning. I know, I'm familiar enough with finances to know that you don't need this. Um, and, um, but I felt it, um, I couldn't wait for clarity. Uh, I needed to get it out there. Questions?
Thanks, Steve. Um, I'm going to start with a bunch of questions. Hopefully it'll address some of the ones that the committee has and then I'll go around to the rest of the committee. So the first one, I think that as a, the committee mem, the committees probably don't know about, because I don't know about it. Can you give us very quickly some background on the, the data breach? Particularly, what does that mean? Did, did I understand that it, that we're getting false claims based on a data breach? And then who's responsible for those claims? Do we get reimbursed? Can you give us a little bit of background on that?
I don't think it's, was questioned if false claims. Basically, um, Harvard Pilgrim's claims processing shut down for a couple of months. Uh, and they've been, um, basically catching up.
Okay. A backlog of claims. So the, the data breach has nothing to do with false claims, it's just that it's, it's caused a backlog of claims and so we're seeing a peak possibly because?
Caused a backlog and caused our ability to analyze our information, um, to basically not be, not have anything useful until August.
Okay. I think that's clear. The, the next question I had, talked a little bit about the reinsurance reimbursement. What's the timing on that and does it help with cash flow? Or is it, I mean, obviously it's not helping with cash flow because it's not coming fast enough, but what is the typical timing on the re, the reimbursement?
Most of it usually comes later in the year. And, uh, what we're seeing early may be just exactly what we were just talking about, delayed claims, um, coming through now. Um, over the years, we've, um, I think there was one year we made a lot of money on reinsurance and every other year we've lost some. This past year, you know, never saw anything like it. So, um, I would, I hate to say reinsurance is like a trip to the casino, but it, it's a gamble, but it's a gamble we have to take because we can't absorb the risk of the large claims. Um, I've never known an insurance company that went bankrupt. They usually get the, the better of the bargain.
Um, so the options that you've shared here, um, do any of them help us with the current situation or are they more sort of long-term for next, next plan year?
Certainly plan design and cost share is something that can't be done quickly. Medicare migration, maybe we can get some advantage out of that this year. Pharmacy benefit management would probably be a next year issue also. So, yeah, the big dollars can't really be done quickly. Believe me, if we thought of anything that we'd done quickly, we'd have done it by now.
So, so then my, my bottom line question, the one I think that's on everybody's mind is what happens if we run out of money? How do we pay our claims? Where does the money come from to close that gap?
Well, we're kind of a child of the two organizations. So if we run out of money, then they're going to have to give us some. Uh, we could have an interim rate increase. I don't think it's ever been done before, but we could do it. Um, and the Health Insurance Trust will meet on Thursday morning and, and we'll be discussing that. Um, I, um, at the moment, I wouldn't know how much they asked for. I would like to see another month of data. But, yeah. The only option other than the ones I've mentioned for, um, uh, cost savings that the, um, trust has is raising rates. So, and yeah, if we have to, we'll do it. Or if there's another solution, I'm open to it, but.
Okay. Questions from the committee? We're getting close to our, our witching hour here where we all just sort of melt into puddles of exhaustion, so.
I'm glad you let me go ahead then.
Any, any remaining questions? Andrew?
Anthony, thank you for coming here today and I know that you've been instrumental in helping us fix some of these rights. He's been here since July, he's saved us half a million dollars. What other thoughts have you had about ways we can help to solve this problem or help to mitigate our own concerns with the health of the trust?
I, I mean, I think Steve did a really good job laying out some different things that, you know, that the trust has already done and, um, is working on. So, you know, I think we've done that. I think the change, um, to the Medicare program was, you know, a, a wise one because, um, uh, I think that, that program specifically, you know, saved, uh, quite a bit of money without, you know, a lot of takeaways from members. And I think just proactively looking at all these, um, and having an open mind that the trust has had to look at any and all options and, um, quite frankly, there, there's more than likely going to, there's going to be some changes that are made, whether it's through plan design increase or. whether it's through plan design increase or, you know, all the different options mentioned. I just think folks need to have an open mind around that so that hopefully that can be solved in a combination of different things that will make those much more palatable for folks. So, you know, if we went all rate increase, I think it's a little bit difficult for both the district, the town and the employees to handle. But if we are diligent, look at all options and try a combination of approaches, I'm pretty confident that we can find, you know, a way to the other side. But I think it's going to take some, some time and some compromise and a lot of open-mindedness.
There are some levers the trust can pull to make some changes. Medicare is an example of it. But I know that Steve, you mentioned plan, design and cost share. Can you tell us some of the impediments we would have to making changes of those? And what other types of things need to be done were we to go into that route?
Absolutely. So if you look at plan, design and cost share, those are pretty difficult levers to pull. So when we talk about different financial levers, there's a process to go through that. There's, you know, you can look at both collective bargaining as part of it and impact bargaining. Or you can utilize health, municipal healthcare reform, you know, that started back in 2011, where there's a process in place to kind of mandate some plan design down at GIC level. So that is, you know, one way you could go, but it's, it's a little challenging. And then if you look at cost share splits, I think, you know, to be at benchmark, I think, you know, pushing that lever would help. But if you just looked at that, I think it's challenging on the pocketbook of members to just consider that alone. So it does raise quite a bit of funds, but it, it does just shift the cost over to the member. So if we look at programs like Medicare Migration where essentially the member's not really losing anything, the town's going to save. I think that really helps. So again, you know, you're, you're essentially, I don't want to call it a silver bullet, but it's a way to do it. But again, retirees need to have some open-mindedness around it. I think, you know, there's some data that we're going to need from all parties involved and there's going to be some cooperation with that. So basically, members move over to Medicare. They get on a Medicare Supplement Plan, historically, they were on the active plan. And that, again, would generate, you know, about a half million dollars in savings. On the pharmacy side, again, you know, there might be a different process. It's not going to be included as it is now with the health insurer. But with that specific program, I feel like there's not as much impact to the member. There might be some, there might be some changes to formulary and things like that. But I think that's a lever that we can push without it really hitting the pocketbook so much of, of all the organizations and employees involved. And then when you look at administration and, you know, moving to a third party, maybe there's less overhead. And, you know, you have a slightly different process for claims and things like that. But again, it's not just hitting the pocketbooks of folks. It's, it's, it's more of a kind of behind-the-scenes change. So when possible, we like to go those routes. But again, it's undeniable that, you know, copay changes and deductibles and cost share changes can certainly help and help rather quickly.
Any other questions? Liz and then Peter.
Forgive my ignorance on this, but if we were to go to third-party administration, is that going to cause a loss of jobs within like this community? Or I'm not sure who does our administration now?
I, again, I don't think so. I think we're, you know, we're looking on the active plans, you know. Again, it's something that is being considered and bids are being considered from, you know, all different parties. My understanding is those would be all local insurers. I, I, I don't believe as far as that goes, you know, there, there would be anything like that that would displace folks. But again, it's possible, but likely, you know, it's not like we're moving to a company that's overseas or something like that. It, it's going to be a local insurer, most likely.
Mine's a comment for the committee more than a question for Health Insurance Trust. But, you know, the, the status of the trust is one of the health insurance challenges we're going to have to contend with in the next fiscal year and possibly this fiscal year. The other one, quite honestly, is that we've had 28 additional people take our insurance beyond what was budgeted for the current year. The challenge that we have is the open enrollment periods run through in May, but our budget is done in the spring. And so as people either retire, you know, particularly retire, they get to stay on health insurance, but then you're hiring employees behind. You have to, you know, be able to offer them the option for health insurance. It could also be that more people are kicking into family plans from single plans. But, you know, the, the cost and Sherry or Andrew, you know, I think the cost is about $20,000 a person to the district that goes on the health insurance, correct? Yeah. So when we're talking about 28 people on the health insurance that were unanticipated, that's another big number that we're contending with. And that's this year, one of our budgeting challenges where we really have to think about how we manage the budget this year. But it's also now has to go into the base plus whatever increases we have on health insurance next year. We have to make sure we carry forward. So, you know, that's, you know, not to be the bearer of bad news, but I'd rather you know all the bad news rather than surprises.
I think you're foreshadowing what we're going to have at some future meetings as a presentation. Gentlemen, thank you so much for, for coming and staying with us this late hour. We are going to move on to the rest of the subcommittee member updates. So Rebecca, I'm going to turn it to you for an update on School Resource Officer Sub and Budget Sub. You get to choose which one you want to do first.
I'm going to start with the SRO Subcommittee Update. The SRO submet on Tuesday, October 10th at 6:00 PM. We discussed the results of the survey sent out last spring to families, staff and students and evaluated the perception of the SRO program by the respondents. Recognizing the overall positive perception of the program, we must take seriously the response from historically marginalized communities, which was not in line with those of the broader population. We also discussed possibilities regarding the future of the program, recognizing that we are in a difficult budget cycle this year and are conscious of the difficulties in accessing needed resources and supports for the administration staff. We plan to meet again on November 7th at 6:00 PM in the admin building when we'll work on finalizing our recommendations for the larger school committee. Anyone interested in our work can visit the ABRSD website to see all the information gathered. And then the Budget Subcommittee Update. The Budget submet on Monday, October 16th and discussed the budget shortfalls facing the district driven in part by increased costs and the evolving needs of the student body. As stated previously, we are facing a difficult budget cycle. I want to say that the winnowing of the school budget affects everyone and stifles the very spirit of our community. This should raise alarm bells for all. The goal is to solve both the short-term budget issues and look at the long-term plan to ensure we have ample room for growth and change as needed. Though we want to be aspirational in our work this year, we are unfortunately in crisis mode. Working closely with ALG as well as Foxborough Leadership, we will get through this together. The next meeting will be on October 30th at 3:30 PM on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add that following the Budget Subcommittee Meeting, we did sort of decide to switch around some of our agenda topics. So the memo that I sent previously where we were going to be discussing sort of at length, enrollment and enrollment history, we've actually scratched that for the next meeting and instead we're going to do sort of a number of topics on budget. So we'll have a first preview of what the next year's budgets look like, what the drivers are. We'll have some presentations from the finance committees in terms of what the town side looks like. And then we'll also have the opportunity for our first read and sort of group discussion on budget guidelines, which will be an important document for this year. So our November 2nd meeting is really going to be focused pretty early, I think, historically on, on budget topics. Please.
You know, I'll just, you know, thank, you know, Sherry and Andrew, but all of their staff as well because we have never tried to roll up the budget this early in the, the school year. But they have now rolled up pretty much every employee we have into the next fiscal year, projecting salaries, expenses, health insurance. And we've gone almost line by line through the entire budget just to figure out what would it cost next year to provide the same services this year? And then also looking at realistic perspective on state aid that we might count on, what we use in terms of our own reserves, knowing that they're in decline, as well as, you know, limits of the town assessments and how those are going to impact it so that we could get a realistic number for what the challenge is ahead of us so we can make some decisions about how we're going to approach that. But knowing that, you know, it's, at least from what we're projecting now, it's significantly more than anything we've seen to date. And we've had two really challenging years already. We, we thought we had to get this discussion going as early in the school year as possible to just be out in front of it and be thoughtful and planful. But, you know, what, what's clear, and I said this at ALG, is the, the revenue that we have coming into the district through all of our sources is nowhere close to paying for the, the cost of providing the education that we have. And that's going to be the fundamental challenge that we're going to have to figure out.
Thanks. All right, Capital Subcommittee Update.
Ben, the Capital Subcommittee met on October 11th at 7:30 AM. Brendan Hearn provided a review of the Bureau Veritas Report focusing on the scoring system based on the useful life and estimated value. We discussed assessing assets with individual school principals setting priorities. Discussed, the discussion included the admin building's roof and solar projects and specifically how they were reviewing the scoring system. Further discussion on various building projects included roofing siding and evaluated cost estimates were provided. We also discussed specific school facilities projects, including projects at Blanchard, Conan, Parker Damon, the junior high, the high and the lower fields area, not the concession stands, if I recall correctly. There were a few questions about the Blanchard and Conan roofs with the Conan, with Conan considering renovations for energy efficiency. Keeping in mind, though, the school is over 50 years old. The discussion also touched upon the modular units and potential engineering studies for the athletic facilities, including fields, courts, turf, fields and all costs involved. The CIP Committee, or excuse me, strict, that Subcommittee authorized $20,000 to hire a financial advisor, our advisory company, to help the district with the processes to obtain the maximum amount of financial aid grants and tax rebates for the building work we are potentially going to do. The work on assessing the district's tennis courts have, are underway and there will be no more battery storage units installed on any AB campus. Next meeting is scheduled for October 25th.
Thank you. Liz?
All right, Policy submet on October 17th at 7:30 AM via Zoom. And we started on sort of the first topic that we are going to be tackling for this year, which is the policy on technology, specifically looking at sort of smartphones and cell phones and smart watches. We are specifically trying to stay within our school committee goal of increased communication. So we're going about this very thoughtfully. And our, at our next meeting on the 26th of October, we look forward to hearing some input from the administrators of the actual schools who would be implementing the processes based on the policy.
Excellent, thank you. I am going to skip over the school communication goal update because I think you, probably all of you participated in something over the past few weeks and I would love to hear it. But it's pretty late and so we're going to skip over that until our next meeting. So keep that fresh in your head. We are then now going to move on to the Consent Agenda. So items, as you recall, on the Consent Agenda don't usually require discussion. Approved with one vote unless any member would like an item held for discussion and a separate vote. I'll read each item by name and if a member would like it held, please say hold. Members do not have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes. Item number one, approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of 10:523. And item number two, approval of ABRPTSO budget 2324. Given that no items were held, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
No moves.
Wow. So we'll go with Ben and then Rebecca on that? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. That is unanimous. Thank you. Liz, you're going to read the warrants for us? Thank you.
Yep, I got you. I move that the school committee vote to approve the listed warrant, the following listed warrants totaling AP vendor warrants as follows. 24-00A dated September 28th, 2023 in the amount of $1,726,472.48. 24-00B dated October 5th, 2023 in the amount of $1,237.32. Payroll vendor warrants as follows. 24-007PR dated October 5th, 2023 in the amount of $591,314.26. And payroll warrant P2407 dated October 5th, 2023 in the amount of $2,971,264.97.
Seconded. I'm going to make a friendly amendment to that motion because, someone did this to me once, you missed 24-007B. You missed the seven in your warrant name. So I'm going to make a friendly amendment to make that 24-007B.
Okay.
Do you accept my friendly amendment?
I accept it. Just so you know, it was in the subtitles, it was just sounded fast.
Oh, okay. And then Ben, do you second? All right, so great, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? None. Thank you very much. There's nothing in the FYI, I think, other than our monthly student enrollment, which we're going to get a presentation on. Any last updates from you, Peter? I'll entertain a motion to.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded. Those were very clear. That was Tori and Ben. All those in favor? Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you all.